Good evening and welcome. Let's see, good evening, welcome to the November 24th, 2025 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. In event of an emergency, remain calm and exit through the double doors that you came in. Make a right and proceed to the stairwell. If the hallway is blocked, then exit to the left around the corner and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask everyone to please silence your cell phones. Thank you. And Councilwoman Jackson, could you lead us in the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our invocation this evening, we ask Reverend Howard Travers from New Life Church to come forward and provide the invocation, and there you are. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Council staff, chamber guests, would you join me in prayer? Holy God, on this Thanksgiving week, we praise Thee, O Lord, and we forget not all Your benefits. For You, O Lord, have graced us with the health, the strength, the richness of our lives, and the bounty of family and good friends. Tonight, You have presented us with both opportunities and challenges, providing for us the privilege to serve one another and the great citizens of our city. We look to You this evening for Your peace and for Your presence among us. We look to You to guide the words, the actions, and the decisions made in this room this evening. Grant us strength to persevere in the ways that make for peace, that we might resist that which draws us away from unity and good and fair judgment. We humbly ask that You strengthen our courage and strengthen our resolve to stand up in defense of those difficult issues we know to be just in accordance with Your Word. For this and for all these things, we ask in Your holy and blessed name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, presentation and adoption of the agenda. Ms. English, you're now going to present the legislative agenda.
Good evening, Council. On the agenda this evening, we have eight sets of meeting minutes for the consent agenda. We have several award of bids. There are three resolutions, two public hearings, and three ordinances, two of which are second reading, one is first reading.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the legislative agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda, can we get... Do you want to read that first, or do I... Can we get a... Can we get a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening again. On the consent agenda, we have the April 28th, 2025 Budget Work Session Minutes. We also have the June 9th, 2025 Work Session Minutes. We have one, two, three, four sets of June 16th meeting minutes. They are closed session number one and two, legislative session and work session. And we also have two sets of minutes for July the 14th. One is the legislative session and one is the work session.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, award of bids. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the award of bids?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Low, should come forward. We have several award of bids this evening. Oh, we have to be careful.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I have four awards this evening. The first item on the award is ITB 26-106, Waterside Park Bathroom and Pavilion Construction. This project, I know, is near and dear to quite a few members on council, so we're going to finally get it across the finish line. We released bids again in August and reviewed in September, got bids in. We had three responsive bidders. Our lowest-priced responsive and responsible vendor contemplated is Harvey Construction. Total award, $663,277. I wanted to note on this award, it's contingent upon council approval of the second reading of ordinance 2964. That ordinance allocates some supplemental funding to make this project successful. The second item on award of bids, I have ITB 26-114. This is Woodcock Park Playground Equipment and Renovations. It's for the Department of Field Operations. The contract model is a cooperative contract through Omniapar Partners with Compan. Total cost of this award, $168,969. This is the park kind of off Riverside, tucked in there. And then the last two items are commodities. ITB 26-115, this Motorola radios for the fire company. Total cost, $185,422.50. The city receives contractual pricing through the state of Maryland on their statewide program for Motorola. And then the last item on the award of bids, ITB 26-116. This is the AED heart monitors for the fire company. This one is also a negotiated price through a state of Maryland contract for that vendor, and they're also a sole source vendor. So that's what I got this evening for award of bids.
Thank you. Any questions, Council?
Yes, Mr. Low. Regarding Woodcock, that's on the agenda now, and as well as renovations. Can you tell me, besides the equipment that was listed in our packet, what other renovations would be done and what kind of timeline we're thinking about?
I think it's a spring timeline as far as construction. So we get the award now, I'll cut the PO this week. I know it's all the site preparation, playground and equipment installation. I don't have a depth of understanding of what that layout or like a rendering of what the park would look like afterwards, but I can see if Mike with Field Ops has it, I could send it to you guys. But it's updating to all the ADA compliant playground equipment. You're kind of seeing the smaller townships around us, their playgrounds are all getting remodeled. It's part of this grant funds that flows down and these companies renovating. So it'll be nice when it's done. I kind of hate to see it go. I grew up in that park.
I did too.
That old... The old Tin Man that's in there, like it's something you would never see, so...
No, you won't.
We can drop it off at your place.
All right, that's cool. Yeah.
Are you addressing lighting as well?
I'm unsure of that. It's not...
It's not in the packet, no, I was just wondering.
I mean, it may be part of the plan for that, but I'm unsure.
Okay, I was just wondering in terms of actually, and this is part of, I guess, the resolution maybe, or farther down, it would be nice to have an update on all the parks in terms of renovations that are in the pipeline for the next few years, and maybe the condition of the parks and what might be needed so that it's an awareness piece, that's all. So, thank you.
I think we can address that, because I know, just from being here, I know there's some divisions in the city that do like park safety inspections during the year and that kind of thing. So I think they've got that data somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the Waterside Park. Now, she said, are there going to be lights? Because if you have a pavilion...
Oh, there, yeah. I thought you were talking about Woodcock Park.
No, she was, she was.
Okay, all right.
But I'm speaking about the Waterside.
I want a pavilion too.
Wait, wait, let me get my part. The light, there will be lights.
Yeah.
And as you said, these parks were near and dear, Waterside, but Ms. Woodcock Park is just as near and dear.
I know it is, I know it is.
Yeah, as anything too, as well, I knew this lady very well. But what I want to know is, are we going to get the same configuration that we had before? We saw a picture of it, and is that going to be the same?
I'd have to see...
Anything changed?
Nothing has changed with design as far as I know.
Okay.
No, it's still, I think, a brick CMU bathroom facility with a pavilion, because that site plan would have been approved by HUD for the project that even get built. But, you know...
I want to ask one more question, you probably don't know, probably in the parks, but the mayor will probably know. Now, how would this be governed? After it is up, who's going to govern it? And is the pavilion, I mean, or the... Is it like somewhat like a concession stand pavilion like type thing?
Just to cover it.
With the bathroom?
Two bathrooms, yeah.
Okay, so how are they going to be governed? If you got people out there all during the day wrecking, are they going to be open for that? Or is there a timeline, like you open them up nine o'clock in the morning? Because I know, the reason why I'm asking this is because I know a lot of parks do not leave their bathrooms open.
Yeah.
I know for a fact the county does not let someone that's renting the park. So this is what I need to know. Are those bathrooms going to be open from like nine to five for the residents in the area, or are we going to have them closed unless they're rented?
I think it's going to be run like the others, we'll open them up in the morning, lock them at night during the summer months, and then we'll have to manage them. There's going to be a couple other upgrades there. We're going to have some fence that we didn't include in the bid, and we're going to do ourselves with other funds. The CDBG dollars, they increase the cost on a lot of stuff, so it's better to do with private dollars.
Thank you.
Just a comment. Ms. English, can you put on a list for future agenda, work agenda items of review of the parks? Thank you, thank you so much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, resolutions. We will now move on to the resolution section of the agenda.
Thank you.
Resolution... Thank you, Mr. Low. Before we move on, thank you. Resolution number 3434. Can I get a motion and a second to approve resolution number 3434?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. English?
So resolution number 3434 is for the appointment of Moses Nwakwo to the Youth Development Advisory Committee, the term ending November 2028.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution number 3435. Can I get a motion and a second to approve resolution number 3435?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. English?
Resolution number 3435 is for the appointment of Sarah Yamakawa to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for term ending November 2028.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution number 3436. Can I get a motion and a second to approve resolution number 3436?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. English?
Resolution number 3436 is for the appointment of Bonnie Raichner to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending November 2028.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're going to move right into our ordinances. Ordinance number 2963. Can I get a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2963 for the second reading?
Public hearings.
Public hearings before the ordinances.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Okay. Anyone wanting to speak during either of the public hearings, stand now and be sworn in by the city clerk? Anybody? Okay, the record reflects, no one would like to be sworn in for the public hearing.
Call for the first public hearing? Okay, so tonight before, we have two public hearings. The first regarding Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2025-1, and this is a resolution to amend Article 16 of the city charter to update the chain of command for the Director of Procurement, previously reporting directly to the city administrator, now reporting, or through the charter amendment, to the deputy city administrator. And after the public hearing, this will be for approval for second reading tonight.
Council, do you have any questions?
No.
All in favor to this Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2025-1 for the second reader, say aye.
I think we still just need to call for the public hearing to be open.
We still do, we need to call for it, even though... Okay, we're going to reverse and just call for the public hearing, regardless, I guess, if anyone wants to do it. Okay, the time now is 6:15, and the public hearing is now open. Anyone like to speak for the public hearing? No? Okay, the public hearing is now closed, and the time is 6:16 PM. Council, any questions? All in favor of the Amendment Resolution Number 2025-1 for the second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2025-2, Amendment Section or SC4-1, the Charter of the City of Salisbury to update the powers and the duties of the city administrator and the deputy administrator. Can I get a motion and a second to approve Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2025-2 for the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
It was for dash one, I think. Yeah, I think we need to, just procedurally, Council President, to open up the floor again for a public hearing on 2025-2 before you call for second reading. The last one was with respect to 2025-1.
Okay.
Do you need to present it first?
Okay, so resolution to amend SC4-1 of the Charter of the City of Salisbury to update the powers and duties of the city administrator and the deputy city administrator. So if you want to go ahead and open it for the public hearing?
Yeah, we're going to open it for public comment. The time now is 6:17. The public hearing is now open. Anyone from the public may speak. The public hearing is now closed, 6:17 PM. Council, do you have any questions?
No.
All in favor of the Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2025-2 for second reading, say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay, now we're on to the ordinances. Ordinance number 2963. Can I get a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2963 for the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2963, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Schedule C included in fiscal year 2026 budget ordinance 2935 for the period of July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026 before you tonight for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2964. Can I get a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2964 for second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2964, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing a budget amendment for the mayor to transfer $165,000 from surplus to provide additional financial support for the Waterside Park project. As you mentioned before you tonight for second reading, no changes or amendments.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2965. Can I get a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2965 for the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2965, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment to the city's water sewer capital project fund to provide additional funds for the elevated water tank maintenance, specifically increasing by $75,000 before you tonight for first reading.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, we are now at the public comments. We will hear public comments, you have three minutes. If you wish to comment, please come up to the podium, state your name, and if you are a city resident.
We good on the timer? Every time I come up here, it doesn't work.
I know.
It's all right, I'm not going to take long. My name is KT, city resident. I'm going to make this very quick. I'm not going to talk about the crosswalks. I think I've made myself crystal clear on how I feel about that. I do want to know, Mayor, what are your intentions with Black Lives Matter Boulevard? And I would like to challenge everybody in this room to spend 40 hours on the streets of Salisbury, sleeping and talking with the homeless, before you take their blankets away. Thank you.
Thank you. Your comments? Next.
Good evening, Council President Blake and members of council. My name is Anissa Pierce Sessoms. I'm with the state of Maryland, and I work for Worcester County Health Department. I also serve as the executive vice president of Ask Me Council III, and I'm a proud member of Ask Me Local 1081. My family has deep ties to this area. My brother is a proud member of Ask Me Local 1081, and he also works for the City of Salisbury Water Department. I'm here tonight to speak against the proposed changes to the labor code. Just two years ago, the workers here won the right to collectively bargain, and it was this council that supported the workers' rights to collectively bargain. The proposed changes tonight impacts the people who work for the City of Salisbury and their families. The changes tonight would tie workers' hands, and they would only receive what they are given from management, not a reflection of what they are worth or what they can bargain. I'm asking you tonight to stand with us, reject these changes, and protect the workers' rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jovanosa, City Salisbury. First, I just want to express my gratitude as a resident of the neighborhood near Woodcock Park. Thank you, Council, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for putting that back on the priority list. My son will be very happy. The Tin Man is going to be missed, but times change. But thank you for that. I wasn't planning to speak on it initially, but I do believe it's important that the council maintain the support for collective bargaining rights that they passed several years ago. As a city resident, I have to be honest, I haven't seen much really good legislation passed in many years, but the labor code update, that extended collective bargaining to the people in our city, is really important. It's a very good thing. Somebody from a labor background, myself, with a family, proud union workers, we understand the importance of that. The ability to collect and bargain is a pathway to the middle class for a lot of people, especially in an area that is increasingly difficult to afford to live. So I truly believe that any changes that could be detrimental to that should be tabled. It's just not good policy, nor is it good for the basic living standards of our citizens. And that includes anybody, whether they're first responders, fire department, city workers. It's very simple. If you are making a living helping this city, you should have that fundamental right to collectively bargain. It should not be taken away. Third point, final point. In recent weeks, it's obviously come to our attention that the former city council president obviously resigned largely because of residency fraud. We now know with the documentation that that was known by at least one member of the current city council. We have the documents, and those documents are going to be released on open agenda in the near future. However, an additional city council member seemed to go out of her way last week to play ignorant of that fact. And yet, it seems to be that we also are going to have documents very soon that demonstrate that at least two members of the city council knew for several months that former city council president, DeShawn Doughty, did not live here and in fact lived over the bridge. In my opinion, that becomes a very, very major ethical lapse. It essentially, as I see it, is aiding and abetting fraud and is frankly taking the voice away of our citizens who are robbed of a voice from District 2. The public record is going to reveal that, I believe, but I strongly encourage both of these city council members to seriously think about if they feel fit to serve on the council any longer because of their dereliction of duty and violation of public trust. And again, the documents will demonstrate the truth, as the documents demonstrated the truth several weeks ago. So please, consider resigning from your roles and don't harm the city anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next?
Forgive me trying to work out a line here. Good evening, Dan Herr, 111 West Chestnut Street, and city... Hold on, the city steward, no longer acting chief steward, but state stormwater inspector. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here on behalf of our city employees to urge you to reject the proposed amendment to labor code, an amendment that would weaken the collective bargaining rights that we as a city have deliberately chose to uphold. We already agreed on how we would handle changes to our labor policies through collaboration, transparency, and teamwork. We decided that any changes should come from a collaborative process, not unilateral demands made without employees' input. This men breaks that commitment and sends a message that our voices and the voices of the people who keep this city running every day matter less than decisions that affect our work. And I want to be very clear why this matters. We're facing a very real staffing crisis. The three years I have worked here, I've had three supervisors, three directors, and only one inspector on my team has been here longer than I have. Many others have come and gone so quickly that I've trained them in exactly what needs to be done, not once having the chance for it to really hit home. Our last deputy director didn't even last two weeks, bless his heart. When we talk to new employees and ask why they don't get more involved, why they don't join us at our table, the answer is always the same. I don't expect to be here long enough for it to matter. That's the reality we're living with, and it's exactly why protecting collective bargaining is so important. It gives employees reason to stay, it gives them a voice, it gives them a sense that this city is willing to work with them, not simply make decisions for them. So today, I am asking, keep us at the table, keep us working together as we agreed to. Give us a chance to build a workplace where people believe their voice matters, where they can see a future for themselves and the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Gary Brever. I'm a shop steward for City of Salisbury, Local 1081. We are asking you to reject this proposal because we deserve the right to have a say at your table. We do, just as we do more work now than I when I started nine years ago. We have neighborhoods that are coming up, we have the same eight trash, or seven trash trucks, we have the same seven employees doing the same work, doing the same work that they've been doing, just they have so many different neighborhoods have came up. We've got 500 trash cans on our own route that just came up. We don't have enough vehicles, we don't have enough people. We do everything we can to make sure the city runs properly, and to take our voice away would be detrimental to the morality of people. We just had two people leave because the money wasn't there for them. We train people and they leave. You can go anywhere and start with more money than you start with at the city. You come here to the city because you want to help. We just don't, and we're not going to keep people if you take it away. It's just not going to work. We have to be able to say something. The pay is detrimental to everything that we do. We are not even on par with other municipalities. The training, if we don't, we don't even have time for the training because we don't have the amount of employees to be able to train. It's absolutely crazy, the amount of neighborhoods that are coming up, and we don't have, we just don't have the people. It's, we gotta be able to take care of the people we have so they don't leave. And with taking away the bargaining rights, that's not going to help us. I'm so... I'm sorry, I'm emotional about the situation. It's just, we try everything. We got smashed on the snow because the average person in public works stay three to five years. We didn't even have the people, we don't have the people that were trained properly to do the snow. We, two years ago, the trash trucks went down. We were loading them in loaders and putting them in dump trucks because we didn't have the trucks. We just, y'all gotta figure out how to make it so we can do our job and go home in the same way we came. We have people that work two jobs. We have a guy that lives in his car because he can't afford to pay rent in the city. It's crazy. We gotta do something. I'm sorry, I apologize. Y'all have a good night.
Counsel, my name is Rachel Mitchell, and I live in District Two of the City of Salisbury. First of all, I wanna say thank you to everyone here that's speaking about collective bargaining. I'm here today to request for this council to do whatever is in their power to veto the decision to dismantle the Housing First program, dismantling this program over ninety-five thousand dollars. That's the allocated budget for the fiscal year 2026. It's a lot of money. I could use ninety-five thousand right now. But it's not that much money. Not when the City of Salisbury spends one hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars on their cellular phones as allocated in the same budget. Not when there's a twenty-five thousand dollar allowance for employee picnics and banquets. Not when there's a one hundred and thirty thousand dollar allocation for office. I don't know what that means, unfortunately. When you look at these numbers, eight thousand dollars or so per person, per year, does not seem that much. But it's still money. Money that can be spent better, right? No. Not when the average apartment cost in Salisbury was thirteen seventy-five per month in June 2025. Not when ALIS studies done in our area say you need twenty-five hundred dollars a month to survive as a single adult. Not thrive, survive. Not when the average person getting SSI only gets nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars a month. Not even enough to pay rent. Money cannot be spent better by this city than helping those that are most vulnerable to us. There is no sign or park or festival that can make that okay. There is no way to save money in our budget in a way that is morally responsible if it comes at the cost of hurting these most vulnerable people. And here's the wild part. We have the data to show that this saves money. It does not cost money. We've seen it in Washington. We've seen it in California. We've seen it in Maine. If there are more data-driven options out there, we would go for it. But there isn't because this is the data-driven option. We've seen the positive impacts. And is there a plan? Is there another plan for these people? Is there something that is brewing to help? Or is this just a short-sighted way to save in the short term while damning our neighbors? Eleven people is not a lot. It's not world-shaking, but it is progress, and it's safety. It's a way to support everyone, not just the workable and profitable masses. Mental health is permanent, so housing needs to be too. Community is permanent, so community care must be too. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, Council President Blake and members of the council. My name is Christian Goble. I'm with Ask Me Maryland Council Three. Our council represents approximately fifty thousand public employees across the state of Maryland, including city, county, state, higher ed, K-12. And we are incredibly proud to represent city workers here in Salisbury. A little over two years ago, this council stood with the city workers of Salisbury and passed collective bargaining rights for these free, excuse me, for these workers. The freedom to collectively bargain has only been here for two years in the City of Salisbury. It was an enormous achievement, and hundreds of these workers organized together with Ask Me because they believed at the time, and they still do believe, that the path forward for themselves and their families is through their union. And, you know, we're here tonight because there are amendments on the table in the work session this evening to roll back that progress, to roll back those rights. Taking away workers' rights to ability on their negotiate, or excuse me, on their wages and benefits, removing access to binding arbitration to settle disputes and negotiations. And I just wanna touch on why arbitration is important. It's a proven impartial dispute resolution tool that levels the playing field between management and labor. It resolves in an agreement, a binding final agreement, when there's an impasse in negotiations. Each side, management and labor, have an equal opportunity to present their case in a hearing, to present evidence, to examine witnesses in support of their case. Ultimately, an arbitrator does issue a decision based on the facts of that hearing and also in consideration of other factors, including wages and benefits of similarly situated employees, cost of living information, the availability of funds, and other collective bargaining agreements that exist in the city. This system provides an equal, level playing field for management and labor to resolve their disputes, and it instills faith in collective bargaining where workers know they have an impartial system to obtain a fair contract. In contrast, the amendments before you this evening would upset that equal bargaining power and place all the power with the employer to determine the wages and benefits of these employees. Moreover, the amendments would eviscerate binding arbitration as an effective mechanism to resolve impasse in negotiations. It would leave management unchecked and free to impose the deal they wish upon employees. It is, I have to say, particularly disappointing to see this administration propose these changes of all weeks on the week of Thanksgiving. When people are reflecting upon gratitude and thanks with people in their lives, what kind of message does this send to the city workers of Salisbury that this is being put forward on the week of Thanksgiving? Our union respectfully requests that this council unequivocally stand with the city workers of Salisbury, flatly reject the proposal, and put this issue to rest tonight so that the city workers of Salisbury can enjoy this holiday season with their families without the fear that this administration would seek to undermine their fundamental bargaining rights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Happy Thanksgiving, council. My name is Jared Shablon, and I live in the Camden neighborhood in District Three. Tonight, I wanna speak on two urgent issues that speak to the soul of our city. How we treat our vulnerable and how we treat our workers. Let's start with housing first. In 2017, Salisbury became a leader in our state by launching a Housing First program to provide permanent supportive housing to our most vulnerable residents. This program has helped keep people off the streets, reduced emergency costs, and given people living with mental illness or fixed income a chance at stability. Now in the middle of a growing housing crisis and homelessness crisis, we're talking about rolling that back with no detailed plan to continue service, no clear path for permanent housing, and no guarantee that people won't fall through the cracks. That's dangerous. You cannot transition out of homelessness without stability. Housing First isn't a handout, it's a foundation. Cities across the country have already shown that permanent housing saves lives and saves tax dollars. When we push people back onto the street, we end up paying more through emergency visits, crisis services, and encampment cleanups. Our residents can barely afford rent, groceries, and electricity as it is. Let's not add another cost to residents that only causes everyone to suffer. If we generally want to see more people escape homelessness, let's build on what works. Right across the street from Ann Street Village that already exists is an open lot owned by the city. Let's expand supporting housing there. Let's meet the need instead of pretending the need doesn't exist. The second issue I want to talk about is the proposed change to our city's labor code. I urge you to reject these amendments and for this body to continue standing with workers who run this city. Just recently, I've needed our city employees twice. After my car was stolen, the Salisbury Police Department not only helped me track down and recover my car, they were there for me during a very difficult and frankly scary process. It is because of their work we were able to recover hundreds of care kits for those in need. When the street light, just a couple days later, went out by my house, it was city staff who coordinated with Delmarva Power to get that light fixed and make it so my neighborhood was again, the street was safe at night. You could actually see what was going on. Everyone benefits from city employees, whether it's our trash getting picked up every week, events like Third Friday going off without a hitch, and the streets getting cleaned up after storms, and making sure, like, for example, fires don't burn down our entire neighborhoods because these workers show up every single day. And yet, the proposal before you tonight would gut collective bargaining they fought for and won just two years ago. It gives management complete discern over wages and benefits and remove the very purpose of bargaining in the first place. I've spoken to these workers. They love their jobs and they love their city, but they're struggling. One of the workers told me that they can't afford the city's health insurance. Another one told me that he was living in his car because he can't afford rent in the own city he works at. So I'm asking this council to send a message tonight on the week of Thanksgiving. Protect our workers, protect our vulnerable. Thank you, I apologize for going over.
Thank you very much.
Demetria Marshall, Wycomico County. Is my time running? I need somebody to hand me a dollar so I can make this make sense. Out of all of the council members on the board, how many of y'all are landlords? How many of y'all own housing in Wycomico County? How many of y'all are landlords? How many of y'all gonna give these people somewhere to stay? How many of y'all gonna do that? Not only housing should be first, they should have sustainable housing to live in. Not only should this, just make it make sense. Somebody, please hand me a dollar. I need to make this make sense. Why wouldn't housing be first? Isn't it landlords on this council? Mayor Taylor, please tell me, are you a landlord? Please make it make sense. Why wouldn't housing be first? Each day, I have to go through it. Each day, I have to hear from tenants of Wycomico County. Not only housing should be first, they should have sustainable housing to live in. Living conditions shouldn't be deplorable. Living conditions should be a place that you could bring your family to. We shouldn't feed off the vulnerable. Make it, please make it make sense. I only, I not just stand for me. I stand for the tenants in permanent manor. I stand for the tenants in Moss Hill. I stand for the tenants for every slumlord that is in Wycomico County. Please make it make sense. Are y'all gonna give these people somewhere to stay? Because, look, we can't give them nowhere to stay. I could only help, I could only do my part. But are y'all gonna give them somewhere to stay? You got enough money to do it. If you, please make it make sense. Housing should be first. Another thing, y'all know about the incidents that's going on. It's a lot of stuff that's going on in the community. It's a lot of stuff that's going on in the housing situation, especially when it comes to tenants' rights. It is the city's responsibility to hold landlords accountable. Please make it make sense. Are y'all gonna, I'm gonna ask y'all again. Are y'all gonna give these people somewhere to stay? Okay, I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Honorable members of the council, esteemed mayor of the Thirty-Six Percent, perhaps you would care to quit jacket shopping for a second and perk your ears up a bit? I'm here tonight to speak on a couple issues. Firstly, housing. I don't know if any of you here on this council, or you, Mr. Mayor, have ever been homeless. Neither of I have had quite the fortunate life to have a home. And I simply can't imagine not being able to come home and know there's a place to lay my head safely, to know that everything I need is in one place where I could store my food, where I could store, you know, have heat and shelter. It's a basic human necessity. And if you rip that away from people, you are asking to increase crime. You are asking to increase emergency services costs for people. You are asking for more trouble. So this is a program that needs to continue if we wish to ensure that people have a secure place to live. You cannot pull yourself up from nothing. And on that note especially, I also urge this council to reject any changes to reduce the collective bargaining rights of our city's employees. This country was only ever strong when we had a strong labor force and the ability to negotiate with people. Without that, workers have very little power in negotiations and cannot elevate themselves from their positions. Labor is essential. If you do not value the labor of our city, then do it your goddamn self, Mr. Mayor. Collect the trash yourself.
Excuse me, excuse me, I just wanna interrupt briefly, and you can get your time back. But I do wanna remind the audience, any personal attacks or impertinent comments and disruptive comments, I understand and I appreciate your passion and your support for what you're talking about. But we really are pivoting to a new way of handling things. Personal attacks or comments, just keep it to the actual issue. I really would appreciate that.
I withdraw the remark.
Beg your pardon?
I withdraw the remark.
Okay, thank you very much. And you may have your time back.
Certainly. I urge the mayor to perhaps do things himself if he wishes to devalue city workers so thoroughly. He can collect the trash himself and tend to the needs of the city all by himself if he's not willing to pay for it. Collective bargaining is essential, and it is a worker's rights. Housing is essential for everyone. Both of these issues must be rejected, and we obviously need better leadership. So I would also urge this council to avoid a situation where someone who sixty-four percent of the voters rejected, we should take up ranked choice voting so we don't have this mathematical anomaly. Thank you for your time.
Just remember, audience, and I just wanna say this one last time, we are pivoting to a new, two-years of leadership and decorum. Be very, very mindful of personal attacks and comments. Stick to your issues, stick to your point, and not make any personal names or positions. We understand your frustrations. We hear your frustrations. We see you, we hear you, and we wanna take everything in and validate it. Please be mindful of that decorum here as we move forward. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Megan Alton, Salisbury City resident, District Three. Tonight, I wanna talk about two issues that I think at its core are relatively connected. Housing and our city's labor code. And more importantly, I wanna talk about the people behind these issues, our neighbors, our families, and the workers who keep this city running. Now, when I served on the Salisbury City Council and I had the privilege to do so with Councilwoman Gregory Blake and Jackson, one of the votes I was most proud of to cast was the vote to bring collective bargaining to the City of Salisbury. I did it because we had workers, real people here in our city, telling me that they didn't feel seen or heard by their city. They didn't feel protected, and they didn't feel valued. I had ten-year-long employees tell me that as much as they loved this very city, they had to start thinking about what was best for their families and look for jobs where their work was valued. I had department heads telling me we were losing people by the counts to neighboring counties, and we had the numbers and data to back it up. We were losing talent to communities and neighboring counties and states that chose to invest in their workers. And I'll point out to you guys all that on Route Fifty right now, we have a billboard that is essentially poaching our workers right now because they know that we have workers here that do not feel valued. And when our workers feel like their city doesn't have their back, they leave. They take their skills, their training, and their commitment to somewhere else. And that just doesn't hurt morale here in the city. It hurts our ability to keep our public safe, to keep our streets maintained, and delays vital services for our residents. Our workforce is our community. These are our parents, and our neighbors, and our friends, and longtime employees who know this city better than anyone else. And weakening their rights weakens the City of Salisbury. We are seeing that same pattern now when it comes to housing. Since 2017, Housing First has helped some of our most vulnerable neighbors find stability. It is rooted in a simple truth. You cannot rebuild your life without a safe place to sleep. This program saves taxpayer dollars by reducing emergency room visits, policing costs, and crisis interventions. Permanent housing is fiscally responsible, and it works. And yet, we are now facing a proposal to dismantle Housing First and replace it with a short-term model that, to be honest, has no clear plan, no safeguards, and no evidence in what it will do to keep people stable. We know what happens when cities move away from permanent housing. People fall back into crisis, and the cost falls on all of us. And that danger is now amplified more by the larger reality. At the federal level, we are now seeing critical housing funds disappearing. More families are becoming vulnerable, and this is the worst possible moment to tear down a proven program without a data-grounded replacement in place. What ties these two issues together is simple. Our city needs stability. Workers need stability in their rights, their workplace and their wages. Workers need stability in their rights, their workplace, and their wages. And residents need stability in housing, safety, and the chance to move forward. So in closing, I'm asking this council to keep choosing what strengthens our city. Choose stability over uncertainty, choose community over cuts. And I'm asking you all to reject these amendments to our labor code and preserve Housing First. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Melissa Bragg, Vice President, Professional Firefighters of Maryland, dues-paying union member for over twenty-two years. I'm here to respectfully urge you to reject any changes to the labor code. Two years ago, you gave them collective bargaining, the city workers, and now you want to take it away? That makes no sense at all. That's a huge draw for an employee to come to a place where the workers are respected and, and have a seat at the table. I just can't even imagine. I not only come to you as a dues-paying union member, but I was a dues-paying union member of Local 4246 Salisbury Career Firefighters Association for nine years. And when I left, I left after nine years as an employee of the city of Salisbury, I left instantly making far more money than I would have been making staying here, and that I was making staying here. It's a huge draw to have collective bargaining. What does that tell your employees? What does that tell future employees? That we had collective bargaining, but eh, we didn't like how it was working out, so we decided to get rid of it. Your workers don't matter, your employees don't matter, your rights don't matter. Please, I respectfully urge you to take care of the people that take care of your people. Take care of your city workers, they take care of your constituency, take care of our citizens every day. They're out here doing it twenty-four hours a day in all the conditions, and all they're asking for is a seat at the table. Don't take that away from them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna try to do this without my readers. Good evening, council, my name is Monica Brooks. I am a Salisbury resident, but I'm also president of Wacomiko County NAACP. The city of Salisbury is at a critical turning point. Decisions made right now will determine whether we move forward as a community rooted in fairness, accountability, and trust, or whether we go backwards. First, as she was just saying, first the city refused, first the city's refusal to roll back, the idea to roll back collective bargaining is absolutely absurd, especially with this short turnaround. This, this, the constituents here have not even had an opportunity to really soak it all in and really build, um, what they're trying to do for the fairness of employees within this tiny little period. And the idea to walk it back, it makes us look schizophrenic. We also must confront the ongoing problems of landlords. So I'm, I'm moving on, because I got a few things to talk about. Unaccountable landlords in this community. Too many property owners, especially absentee property owners, and we do have some local ones that are shady too, profit from Salisbury while refusing to maintain safe and livable conditions for the people who live here. Neighborhoods like Pemberton Manor are living with consequences every single day. Not only are they living beneath what they should be in their housing, but they are being persecuted as a result of, of being whistleblowers. People who are in vulnerable positions, and we already know, even if you have the money, there's nowhere for you to go. So this housing issue is destroying people's dignity, forcing them to live in spaces where you have a hole in your ceiling for months, where you have a pregnant woman falling through the floor and being blamed for it, where you have a whole cabinet sitting on top of your counter that fell from the top to the bottom, and it's been sitting there for four months. When you have mold that's just so pervasive that somebody comes over with some wet wipes and says, "We'll just use some bleach wipes to get rid of the mold." Enough already. I am so tired of hearing these stories over and over and over, but I'm not seeing anything being done legislatively to correct it, to put people in a position to say, "Listen, if you're gonna come here, if you're gonna work here, if you're gonna own property, if you're gonna have people house in your space, then you need to t- treat them with dignity and t- treat them with fairness, and make sure that they have something beautiful and that is safe for them and their families." So we want people to come here, but we don't need to give up. I don't believe in a whole bunch of tax breaks, I'm just be honest. But I do believe that we need to hold people accountable. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Monica Foley, city resident. Monica actually touched base on several similar points. Salisbury needs to do better on housing, on labor rights now, and on how we treat the people who live in this community. I said this at the last meeting, housing is an interconnected system. Apartments, entry-level homes, family homes, downsizing options, senior living. When one line breaks, the whole chain suffers. If people have nowhere to move up, the system stalls. We need a functioning housing pipeline that supports people at every stage, and that means addressing the broader housing market. We need to continue to build and stop slowing down permits. Again, we don't need every project to be labeled affordable. We simply need more homes because each new home frees up another. In addition to our homes for purchase, we have a serious issue with a small number of investors who control hundreds and sometimes thousands of rental units. Some of those investors are in control of the permits and building market. It seems like a conflict of interest for both the county and the city residents. When so many homes are controlled by investors, prices rise, rents climb, conditions decline, and tenants are left without alternatives or leverage. Some rental communities in Salisbury are unacceptable conditions. Tenants are afraid to speak out because they know one complaint could leave them without a place to live. We need accountability and stronger oversight in our rental market. In regard to Housing First, it is not the cause of our crisis. The crisis stems from the shortage of permanent housing and the economic instability driving more people onto the streets. When it comes to our unhoused community, we shouldn't be rushing to throw away items that you might not consider valuable, but that are irreplaceable to others. Items that for so many were the last remaining links to loved ones, security, and a sense of humanity thrown in the trash. Most people don't choose to be homeless. They should still be treated like humans. As far as the proposed amendment for the labor code, it would shift power entirely toward employers and weaken workers' ability to organize. As Thomas Donoghue said, "The only effective answer to organized greed is organized labor." Diluting the labor code means lower pay, weaker protections, and less stability for the very people who keep this city functioning. We cannot say we value our residents while undermining the workers who are Salisbury. Finally, I mentioned the county, in the county budget meeting, that I think we need to look at a better solution for the speed bumps. I believe we should put up speed cameras instead. The logic of this is that the speed bumps don't help with speeding. When speaking with a local fire department, legitimate concerns were mentioned about damage to the suspension and shocks on the million-dollar fire engines. Cameras would actually reduce speeding and generate revenue.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? That's okay?
Hi, I'm Lisa Hawkins, I'm a city, city resident. I am part of the Housing First program. We received letters in the mail a few months ago that said the program was ending for the people who are currently in the program. When I got in the program, I was told this was permanent supportive housing. If I would have knew then what I know now, I would have done a lot of things different because I thought I was in permanent housing. Permanent housing is an indefinite program, according to the HUD guidelines. There are other programs, rapid rehousing and things like that. I've heard comments that this was supposed to be for somebody who was out on medical leave and just needed help for a year to two years to get back on their feet. That's rapid rehousing, that is not permanent. Permanent means permanent. I think, I feel, I did what I was supposed to do. I was homeless. I was caught up in Wells Fargo eighty-twenty split. I did not know anything about it. I was a first-time homebuyer, a single mother of two children. I thought I was doing the right thing and found out years later it was not. That led to my homelessness. Because of mental illness and a lot of other physical things going on, I was homeless for over six years before I got into this program. I thought I was gonna be able to stay here pretty much for the rest of my life. Obviously not. You tell me where in Salisbury I can go on SSI of nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars a month? I get a hundred and sixty-six dollars in food stamps. Where am I supposed to live? Where do I go? I'm not the one to be living in an apartment, or a condo, or with people. It's all I can do to stand here today in front of you people. You don't know how hard it was for me to come up here. I can't do it, I'm not the one. I need to be out there by myself. And if I have a choice, I would prefer to be out there homeless in the woods by myself. I do not, I, I cannot do people. I was in, in retail for over thirty years. I cannot do people anymore, I can't. I'm not the one. And if you're gonna do a permanent program, you need to make it permanent. You can't tell somebody it's permanent, wait for them to get their life together. I bought a vehicle, I have credit. My credit went from nonexistent to over seven hundred now. Yeah, on SSI. I did what I was supposed to do. Now it's time for the city to, to keep their word.
Thank you very much.
Hey, um, my name is Christy, I live in Salisbury, and I work in Salisbury, and I also am part of one of our homeless shelters. I am here, obviously, to talk about Housing First like everyone else. But I know you've heard a lot of the numbers already that people have said. I just want to echo that we're leaning more towards the median rent here being like fifteen ninety-five a month. And like Ms. Lisa just said, the average for SSI is nine sixty-seven. If we're going to look into a transitional housing program, we have to look at what transitional means and what people are going to be transitioning into, what support is going to be there for the transition? Because there's no way to make SSI more, there's no way to make disability more. What are they going to do? I work every day right over here with the people who sleep under the bridge. They don't, they're not out there because they want to be, they're out there because there is nowhere else for them to go. There's nowhere for them to go here. How do I sit down with someone and apply for housing with them when they have to pay first month's rent, when they have to pay a security deposit? I don't have, I have a professional job, and I wouldn't be able to afford to apply for housing here. How do we expect people who are making minimum wage to transition into this, into this environment? I did the math, and they would have to work at least seven, seventy-three hours every week to, at fifteen dollars an hour at minimum wage, to be able to make the median rent here. How can we expect someone to do that? That's insane, that's not feasible. I just want you to remember that people are more than numbers, it's the humanity behind it all. They come in to me with tears, they come in to me with their children, they come in to me with their elderly parents, and I sit there and I say, "I don't know what to do for you, I don't know how to help you," because there's nothing I can do. All of our shelters are at capacity. If we're going to create more capacity for those shelters, I, I don't know what's gonna happen. People can only stay in them for up to ninety days, and then they're out for sixty. No one can get things together in ninety days, and then they lose it all in the sixty days that they're out on the street because they can't just, it's a revolving door. Every single morning, people come in, they have to call the shelters every morning by nine AM to see if they can get in. And every morning, there's a line waiting to use my phone because they can't afford a phone because the government phone program has ended. And so they have to wait for our building to open to use the phone to call the shelters to find out it's too late for them anyway. There is no solution right now, and adding more people to the homeless crisis is only going to exacerbate it. We're only going to see more. I think I've said everything, thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Joe Scifino, Salisbury. Before I speak, I just want to say that, uh, while I didn't, didn't know we're gonna get this kind of a crowd, I absolutely support the collective bargaining rights of, of our city employees, and I support any programs we can do for the homeless that we have. Switching gears, smart politicians abide by a motto that today's opponent might be tomorrow's ally. But we have some members of council that don't follow that credo. I listened to a twenty-five-minute interview by Councilwoman Gregory on, uh, Don Rush's show. And I, while I was expecting to hear twenty-five minutes of positive things that she's done in six years, I, instead, I heard twenty-five minutes attacking the mayor, who's not perfect, as we've all heard tonight. But he has accomplished a good number of things for the city that have been on the back burner for a long time. Projects like the North Prong, Waterside, Lake Street, a community center for the west side of town, Carroll Street repaving, Fitzwater Street Town Homes. These were all on the back burner and now are working toward completion. The mayor was also attacked at the last meeting over a parking space. That's something that could have and should have been addressed in private, but instead, it was grandstanding like it was the end of the world. It, it was embarrassing. They talk about transparency, but this council has had more closed sessions for no good reason. What are they hiding from the public? I heard talk about wanting to see facts and data, but why? Since this council simply ignored the data from its own Department of Infrastructure and Development regarding numerous problems with increasing the density. But that contradicted the desired outcome of the developers. Now, I voted for the mayor because one of the things he was gonna do was address the corrupt land giveaways in the downtown and the sweetheart deals, including taxpayer-funded ten-million-dollar parking garage for the developers that they got from a previous mayor and council that harmed the taxpaying citizens of Salisbury. Now, if you've read Holly Worthington's lawsuit over those land giveaways, you'll see that the procedures outlined in our city charter were ignored in each sale, which puts all those giveaways in jeopardy. Now, the councilwoman said she suspended her recent campaign for county executive because the city needs her. Really? I didn't hear anything in the six years that she's accomplished. But what I would say is that she's a serial candidate. She ran for county council in 2018, ran for city council, was elected in 2019, wasn't even in the job two years, ran for state senate in 2021, got re-elected to city council in 2023, not even two years in that seat, announced the run for county executive. How dedicated are you to the city when you look to run for higher office at every opportunity? We certainly don't need people like this on council. We need someone who's gonna look after our interests.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. I'm here simply a resident of the city of Salisbury for fifty-nine years, okay? But today, we're talking about housing. We was here at the city, right by the library, today. We fed over a hundred homeless people. We do it every year, this was our third year doing it. We do Christmas dinner for homeless people. We've, I know it's a revolving door because we don't always see the same ones. But today, we heard a whole lot from a whole lot of people. People gave props, people disliked people. But it ain't about you, it ain't about none of y'all. That, that's just personal, we throwing out personal stuff about each other. It's time to take action, action, speak loud in the words. You all are going home tonight, lay down and go to sleep? Where are they going? They got their warm meal today, but where are they going? Thank God, the weather was very good for them. Where are they going? Where'd they go when you take it away from them? The ones that are already in there? Where, where are they going? We got to do better, we say we're a city, we supposed to be helping one another. It ain't, again, it ain't about y'all. I don't care whether your fats, your pockets are fat, your money is long, it don't matter. You got to do better. And it means action. So I ditto everything that everybody's saying about housing because it's real. So let the action happen, and let it happen immediately. It don't take that long to figure this out, about getting some housing for the homeless. It don't take that long to figure this out about getting some housing for the homeless, keeping Anne Street open for people that can't afford nowhere, because you heard what social security do and don't do. You can't do nothing about that, but at least our city can give some affordable housing. Some of those people out there don't need your hand out. They need your help. It's two different things. So, please, all the talking, let the actions happen. That's all we wanna see is action. That's all I wanna see. We keep coming to meetings and no action happens.
Thank you very much.
Brandon Records, I'm the president for the Salisbury Career Firefighters Local 4246. Goes without saying, the Local 4246 opposes the proposed revisions to the labor code. Labor code gives unions a seat at the table to discuss wages, hours, other terms and conditions of employment. These revisions propose to make the wages a topic of the mayor's alone, without discussion, without union involvement, without hearing from those affected. But the mayor doesn't fight fires, or cut drivers out of cars from accidents, or respond to heart attacks, broken bones, strokes, in the middle of the night, on the side of the road, and assisted living facilities, and everywhere else that you can imagine in the city at any time of the day. Those are the responsibilities of the IAFF and its members. We're proud to have those responsibilities. We make a career of those responsibilities. Those responsibilities require skill, ability, vigilance, and toughness. Those are traits that are in demand. Firefighters and paramedics are in demand. Other cities and counties are paying to find and retain those traits. They're offering stable, rewarding careers for firefighters and paramedics. Ocean City pays 25% to 50% more year over year over an entire career. Annapolis, 30% to 70% more. They are our closest opponents. Salisbury firefighters and paramedics are asked to accept a career at a discount. It's not a fair ask. It's a topic to discuss and to work through. That's what a labor code makes happen, real, honest conversations about what it takes to hire, retain, and advance firefighters. Of course, it's not all about wages. There's plenty to work through, about hours, workload, safe staffing, equipment, deployment, training, on and on. All that needs to be discussed, along with wages. That's what we plan to do with the city and in the coming months. I ask you tonight, it goes without saying, the whole room has spoken, I just so happen to be bringing up the rear. This doesn't make sense. I ask you to shut this down tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Robert Taylor, Salisbury resident. I wanna thank Joe Scifano for what he said earlier about Councilwoman Gregory's radio show last week. Took the words right out of my mouth, so now I don't have to say them. I can talk about something else. On the agenda for the work session, there is again North Shoemaker Drive annexation. Two months ago, it was on for a work session, and it was tabled, and one of the reasons it was tabled was because the city has never put together an affordable housing legislative basis. We still don't have it. We've talked about it, the council, for months, maybe probably years, and done nothing. That needs to be tabled again, and we need to get a serious affordable housing requirement. And I'm not talking about homelessness. I'll get into that in a minute. I'm talking about what is sometimes called workforce, sometimes called affordable, sometimes called attainable. There are different words for it. People who are gainfully employed but cannot afford to live in McMansions. There's different ways it can be addressed. I researched this to some extent. Some cities now have actually imposed space limitations on housing, so they have essentially smaller houses. Smaller houses are more affordable. That's one way of skinning the cat, and there are others, but I don't have the time to go over all that tonight. Now, on homelessness, and particularly the Housing First, and I'm not against that program, but I will say this, we're gonna have to be careful in Salisbury about how we spend money. We now have one of the highest municipal tax rates in the state. It's over a dollar. Much of that happened, just like Housing First did, under Jake Day. Since 2014, our tax rate has gone up 26%, just the rate. What you actually pay if you own property is based on your assessment, and that's gone up about 26% in that period of time. So, essentially, we're paying now roughly 50% to 60% more than what we were paying 10 years ago. If you own a home, you get a benefit of a tax, that's not a waiver, but it's a limitation, so it doesn't go up as much. But commercial property and rental property, it goes up more, those numbers I mentioned. Now, what's the county doing? Homelessness is a county problem. Why Comico County is doing nothing? They get a $16 million a year disparity grant. Where does that go? Goes into the county treasury. Doesn't go to the city. Why don't we go to the county and say, "You gotta help us with this"? What's Fruitland doing? Why don't the people who come in and complain here and say the city ought to be doing more, go to the county? Go to Fruitland. Make them do something, or at least ask for it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Michael Langford, 1026 Arthur Court, city resident. I just wanted to talk about the labor code amendments, I guess. So, I just read it through while we were sitting here, and there are changes that make sense, and there are changes that don't make sense. It kinda seems like maybe if you could parse through a particular issue, I think a lot of the times in government, we hear on the national scale how people get a bill passed, and they tack on every single thing after the other thing, so there are things that are reasonable. "How are you against this thing? It's so good." And it's like, because there are these other horrible things attached, right? And so, if there's a way to, like, I'm not completely for or against all of these changes, but, you know, like, I suggested in the past, the changing of the timeline and that needing to fall in line with the budget season, that just kind of makes sense as administrative decision. There's something that's actually, I did wanna share, which was specific, which nobody is mentioning, and I think it is kind of key to the union, is that we're changing it from being five arbiters from Maryland who are, quote, this is all quote from what it was, "from Maryland who are familiar with public labor issues." What's that qualification? That can be anybody. That's your Uncle Charlie. So, now we're changing it, and I think this is a good idea, list of seven arbiters, so more, from the mid-Atlantic region who are members of the National Academy of Arbiters, which I looked up, is a nonprofit 501(c)(3). Seems like a reputable organization. So, I just think that there are things that, like that, the changing in the arbiter process makes sense, because there's more voices at the table, there are qualified voices. We should look to have that. I think a lot of the issue of this, I do understand the union's point about when the arbiters are not... What the specific language says is that the... It does not say that the mayor sets what everybody pays. It says that the arbiters cannot award a bid that is beyond what has been budgeted. So, that is the part about what everybody tells you what to feel about the thing versus telling you what the thing actually says. And just look at the documents, and I keep encouraging everyone to get off their high horse of their ideology, what they believe, because I think everybody in this room has been right, and everybody has still been a victim despite being right. So, what are you gonna do about it? So, in that aspect, I think being specific about the language, I think there is problematic things. I think the idea that, like, it does take the wind out of the sails for the point of the union, but it does seem like there are some things that maybe are so vague as to allow for corruption and bureaucracy and deliberate slowdowns on the side of the union. So, it just seems like maybe rather than a wholesale yay or nay, maybe you guys can look at the aspects that are working, and maybe there are things that need to change, and maybe other things can stay the same. So, not an easy yes or no, but, you know, that's looking at the issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments before we move forward to our work session? Oh, okay. All right.
Hi, my name is Mike Porenzki. I'm a Salisbury resident. I just, you know, in terms of the labor code and supporting our city workers, I did wanna come up here as a resident and say I really do support our city staff. One of the major challenges I know all of our staff faces is they're asked to do a minimum of 40 hours of work in a 35-hour work week. That puts a lot of burden on staff to perform at a really high level and to feel compelled to work hours that maybe they're not getting compensated for. They're earning comp time, many of them, but if we have difficulty retaining staff or their schedule or their job duties are such that they can't really take off, then it's come time that they can't use. It's just accruing, or maybe disappearing. I'm not exactly sure, but it's just a very challenging position that we're putting our staff in, because as we really wanna grow and do more as a city, residents demand a lot more from government. The, you know, the staff issue is really holding us back in terms of being able to achieve things that we wanna see done. I think that requires a lot of us to seek out partnerships with city government. It's very challenging, though, sometimes to, you know, find the right person to ask to get involved. The other thing I wanted to mention is back on this topic of transportation. I came two weeks ago to discuss transportation issues. I'm gonna bring up the issue of transportation again. The draft Consolidated Transportation Plan for the Partner Transportation has lots of Salisbury-related items, one of them being the Bicycle Master Plan, $600,000 earmarked. I think we've done a lot of work to basically dismantle and change the bicycle bike lanes, the bike infrastructure. There's been a lot of stuff on the table that's just not happened, and I just wanna call on the administration to kind of put together a work session or a forum so that we can start to really address transportation issues, whether it's the Bicycle Master Plan, Rail to Trail Master Plan, Alternatives of Transportation, and then other transportation-related projects that sort of, we keep hearing are in the pipeline, but there's just no information about them. So, I think we really need to take it seriously, and I've just, it's been radio silence in terms of how we're addressing pedestrian safety and transportation issues. So, let's get back on it. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments for this legislative session? Any other public comments? Okay, with no further public comments, the time is 7:22 p.m., and the legislative meeting is now adjourned. Question on the table before we move forward to the work session, did anybody in council need a 10-minute break? Restroom, anything? Okay, we're gonna move forward.